Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, June 1st, 2022. Council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Douglas Bell, Chair.
Here. Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name and neighborhood for the record. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Uh, Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Silver, uh, and I have a residence in Shanghai, um, John Warren. Global Intelligence Society, US National Candidate for the Presidency. We fuse disciplinary intelligences and information templates from 21 primary disciplines. There are many, many other disciplines, but to solve problems, to offer solutions here in Pittsburgh and across the United States, and to some degree as well, across the world. Uh, here are a few references that have been very important to us. One of them is, is the book called An Optimal Learning by W. P. W. B. Powell, um, one that may be a little more amusing, but very interesting to me as a trumpet player. Sachmo blows up the world. Yeah, he really did. Um, then there's this Ukrainian musician, Konstantin Klash Torny, uh, who is responsible for 10 years' worth of cool and clean. This is a marvelous, in my view, connective tissue between electronics, uh, and, and jazz. Um, look, a concern of this council is to ban profanity. Uh, Mr. Lovell said just a few minutes ago, we do not permit profanity. Okay, now, let's just substitute, um, parking violation for profanity. Let's just assume that our officer here, police officer, is transferred to the parking authority. Um, now, this council wants to ban profanity with no rule of council that has to do with profanity directly. There's no rule, okay? So, what if there were, what if there was no parking violation code? How could an officer enforce, uh, a parking violation without any code? How can you enforce a profanity rule without any rule? Second, um, this council wants to ban profanity with no definition of profanity. Just imagine, um, the city code having no definition of a parking violation. It is completely absurd. Third, um, council wants to ban profanity with no profanity's list. Um, just imagine what would happen to our people in the street, uh, who are confronted with a police officer trying to enforce a non-existent parking violation code without a definition and without a list. I mean, it could be anything, which is the case with, um, the words which are not defined, which are not identified, uh, as profane speech. I invite this council to do better on this. Um, the, the, the legal ramifications are very large in terms of civil rights. Um, so, uh, no matter whether a lawyer here says so or not, this is a big problem, and you need to solve it in a different way.
Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Our signatures against reapportionment have proven that it's a no from the Bon Air community. Repportionment would harm our community. We, the people of Bon Air, are best served by remaining in District 4. People like my husband and myself have been active in the community and more. This was read at my husband's funeral. It was written, it came from the Pittsburgh Veteran Firefighters Association, and the author of it was Battalion Chief Douglas Prastovich. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen tugged the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional, and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting and all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name, and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly, but also energetically, his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Mike was a loving and compassionate husband, father, brother, relative, and friend, and I would add neighbor. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. We, the people of Bon Air, have maintained our properties and participated in many functions here. Our community made it extremely clear at our town hall meeting in May of 2021 that we oppose a detrimental property. Join our supporters, Mayor Gany, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Benham for the creation of Green Space. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space is the solution for peace, safety, and happiness of our community. Michael is now one of the watchers, helping from the other side. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone with us in chambers wishing to speak? Please come forward, provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given time to speak.
Excuse me. My name is Tom Brady. To apologize to Bruce Kraus partly for the last time I was down here, blew my top, but, uh, we found out, both of us found out how, what I stand for, but we worked together on the Bailey Avenue project. I thank you very much, Bruce, for what you've done for when you came up to the meeting. That was very nice of you to support the problems up in Mount Washington. Uh, number two, I'm here, and I'd like to apologize partly to Corey O'Connor. Uh, I know he's in favor of the gun control, and every time I hear this killing, that the killing these children in these schools and that, I get furious, and I call his office, which I shouldn't be calling, but I'm sorry. I should, I called the Congress people, and they're not doing nothing but sitting there. Uh, the senators and Congress people are just sitting there on their asses. I'm sorry about that, but it's disgraceful to see these little kids getting killed, and it's not right. And I'd like to see something done, you know, something's got to be done about this. This is out of, it's out of control. And number three, Mr. Coghill. Again, I'm needed, uh, talk to you again about Warrenton Avenue and Boggs. Uh, we got to get that cleaned up and put the trash can there again. As I say, the people ain't going to dump the trash if there's no trash can. Some people pick it up and drop it in there, and some people don't, you know? So, if there's a trash can, we can maybe lighten up the garbage lane on the street. So, as I say, if you can get to that, and I will be talking to you about in the future, about Grandview Park, about Public Works, uh, when, uh, Mike Gable was, uh, control of the thing. Uh, well, first, when Rob Kaczarowski was in control, when we were up there, he permitted us to put cameras up in, in Grandview Park. So did the councilmen, three councilmen did, uh, agreed about that. We did that, and then when, uh, Mike Gable came in, he went into the building, and, and somebody went into the building, somebody went into the building and disconnected the cameras, and I don't understand that. We were catching people doing graffiti up in there. Now, we can't catch them because the cameras are disconnected. I don't understand that. That doesn't make sense. You want to catch these kids, you catch them and you punish them. If you don't do that, it's just going to cost the taxpayers more money to keep on painting these buildings and doing that stuff, and I don't want to be painting that building. I was doing it for years, and I'm tired of it now. I think it's time that we catch these kids, and you got to punish them. They just did a sign. I think the sign cost a thousand dollars up there of the map. Someone went up there and graffiti the whole sign, and that was just a waste of money, you know? And you cannot keep on improving the neighborhood if you got these people out there vandalizing the paper. Why do you do, then why do you improve it? It's just going to be vandalized. So, we want to stop the vandalism, so we got to start doing stuff. So, I want to, um, I'm going to get some money together and try to get the, uh, cameras fixed and hook them back up in the Grandview Park, and so we can catch these kids and make the park nice looking. It is beautiful. If you've ever been up there, you'll see it. Thank you very much, and you all have a nice day.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wishing to speak? Please come forward.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman?
I, I know this is highly irregular. Please, uh, if you just please permit, Tom, you never have to apologize ever for being a strong advocate for your community. You and I have had a great partnership over the years, and I treasure the, the passion you bring to defending your community, and you never have to apologize ever for, uh, for being a strong advocate for your community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Next speaker.
Do I have to keep this long to speak, or can I take it down?
I believe you can take it down.
You believe I can? Okay. If he says I can, I will. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District at 7:15, I'm, I'm sorry, Mercer Street. Um, I came down today because yesterday, when I heard the lawyer state that they're going to change the rules and that you cannot say anything that's insulting, well, you know what? When I walk in the room, you're insulted. So, when I open my mouth automatically, now, who's going to make the decision what's insulting? I think it's insulting whenever we come here and we're sitting in here, Bruce Kraus, let me speak first, speaks a whole half an hour, soon as the camera goes off, he runs back in that room, stays a half an hour, comes back, sits with Ms. Gross and gets to talking to her face. Then you have Mr. Wilson, which I thought was pretty good. He also then went back in the room, come back and sit there with Ms. Gross. What's wrong? I mean, why is Ms. Gross, everybody talking to Ms. Gross? And then also, we got the backs, and we see her back. If she had to look us in the face, I don't think she'd do all that talking. I want you also to look. I have all these signs that I've been making for years. This is in July 2017. Dr. Ron Mill, Miller, Center of Global Studies. Harold Brown, my husband, Brownie, had stated before that Ron is saying, what Ron is saying is making sense. We must be able to track the votes, paper ballots. Finally, the League of Women Voters also realized that we need more transparency and regular periodic review of the voting rolls, and new machines are needed before the next president is elected. That's one thing I wrote. Then I want you to look, 2010, two, two, February 2010, what had happened is that I, Les Ludwig had spoke before me. Well, my husband ain't too pleased about watching City Council. So, just that City Council has, come on, he turned, and I said, oh, come on, Brownie, City Council. He said, Les already spoke before you. When we turned it on, I was speaking, he cut Les Ludwig off. Here's the paper. Even Les came down and said, why did you cut me off? Because he was talking about getting rid of, um, Risen Salt, our mayor's in. Also, I want you just to understand, I catch H-E-L-L, I didn't say it. I didn't say a bad word. I spelled it. I said, I catch hell down here when I come down here because of the attitude that I got from this good reverend. Good reverend says, my baby, my grandbaby can't speak down here, but she can bring her baby. See, you must understand, how can she bring her baby to do city business with on the lap, on the lap? And that lawyer that you got for the city, that you got for us, I'm listening to him. He's helping us write these words that we can't say anything insulting. You insult us when you don't start on top, and we don't come to the table. When you only, you pay 66,000, you want 88,000, you won't even come to two meetings a week.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Are there, are there any other speakers with us today? Seeing none, that will take us to our Standing Committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. Our first new paper is Bill 378.
Bill 378, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Block &amp; Associates LLC for Services Related to the Employment Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $9,800.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held for executive session. Bill 379.
Bill 379, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Maura Harrington in the Amount of $11,887.42 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Garages at the Rear of 256 through 258 Grove Street from a City ES Vehicle on November 11th of 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation? We need a motion to approve the invoices.
Sub moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Next, we need a motion to approve the P card, no, excuse me. We don't have interdepartment transfers. We do not have P cards. That will take us to our Public Safety Services Committee, which is chaired by Councilman O'Connor. We have one deferred paper, Bill 32.
Bill 32, Orders Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title 1, Administrative Article 3, Organizations Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety by Adding a New Section 116-17, Regulation of Pedestrian Stops by the Office of the Bureau of Police.
Motion to approve with discussion, please.
Second. Discussion, Councilman?
Mr. Chair, will you permit interrogatory?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Burgess, are you with us this morning?
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, good morning, Councilman. Uh, I, I know you have been working with the Bureau. I know there were some tweaks to the legislation you wish to see. Are, are you comfortable moving? I am comfortable moving this ahead today, but I certainly would take, uh, would defer to your leadership on it if you feel more time is needed, but, uh, I, I stand ready. I, I would be in support of calling the vote today, but I'm curious about your thoughts.
So, we've already reached an agreement as to what tweaks need to be done. Um, they were supposed to send me, um, because of the turnover of Public Safety, though, but we'd already met, we've already decided what it's going to be. Um, I can do it either way. I can get it and get it ready for Tuesday, or, and hold a week, or we can pass it today, and I'll, we can pass it today, and I can introduce it for Tuesday, the tweak that they want, or we can hold it a week, and I can introduce it next week. Either one's fine with me.
If you, if you would be supportive, I would, in light of, in light of everything that, that is happening today as it relates to public safety and, and policing, and I, I really would like to move it today, but, um, I, I will default to your, your, um, your leadership on it, but I could call for the vote today and amend on Tuesday. Uh, if we're not comfortable with, um, uh, the, the amendment, if members are not comfortable with the amendment, uh, to it, uh, we could certainly recommit, but I, I will defer you on this, but I can, I can go for today.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion from members?
I apologize. This is the bill for pedestrian stops.
Pedestrian stops, yes.
Yeah. So, how did you amend it? Could you tell me?
So, um, we met, I think it was three weeks ago, two weeks ago, I met with the Department of Public Safety. They told me, they and the police told me there's a, just, I think, a sentence that they want in, um, and that they were going to send, I asked them to send me the language, either I missed it, or, but I, I can, we've already decided what it's going to be, so it's not a question of working with them anymore. We already met, we already decided and agreed, um, on what, how we were going to amend it. So, um, I can, um, I can get the language and do it by Tuesday, easy.
Well, I'm going to abstain today, but I do want to say that I think that the more we're talking about doing, doing things, anything in terms of policing, one of the things we have scheduled is a meeting with some of the shooters in the city of Pittsburgh, uh, with council members and the mayor's office and some others. Um, I would be nice to hear what the kids actually think that was needed, instead of what activists say is needed, or what, what police say is needed, or what other groups say is needed. It'd be nice to hear what the actual people affected are saying that they need. It would just be nice to hear some of that. So, I, I hope that we, as we work with some of the kids in the community, we actually hear what their concerns really are, because it may be something that they may want you to do. I don't know. So, for me, I'll abstain today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Second round, Mr. Chair, when the bill?
Second round, Councilman Kraus?
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chair. So, after the murder of George Floyd and, uh, the, the national conversation, the international conversation around how to reimagine not policing, but protecting and serving, we spent, uh, shy, just about 20 weeks, uh, every Monday morning, meeting with black leadership, black American leadership throughout Hilltop neighborhoods, and invited just about every special guest we could possibly think of for their, um, their input into how, how do we reform policing into a model of protecting and serving? And the number one request that we got, week after week after week after week, was to focus on, uh, traffic stops and the impact that traffic stops have, uh, on this, this interpretation that certain neighborhoods are policed rather than protected and served. And I heard it loud and clear, and not just once, again and again and again and again. Uh, and so, it's why I asked the councilman to, um, to sign on to this bill and be a co-sponsor with him. It wasn't made, um, uh, in a rash decision by any means. It was done with weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks of careful thought and direct communication with community members and leadership that I, that brought me to this decision that I believe this is the right choice to make, and it's why I am, I am supportive. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. President Smith?
Yeah, I just, I, and I also voted for the, um, traffic stops, Councilman, but this is the pedestrian stops, and we do have a meeting coming up with the most at-risk youth in the city, and I do, and again, I value that you meet with some of the most amazing people in the Hilltop, and I know some of them. Um, but they're, again, they're adults, and I don't know how much they're affected by some of this. I think everybody's a little bit affected, but I, right now, I think our youth are affected in such a tremendous way, and they really do want to have a voice, and I think, let them have a voice, let us sit down and talk with them and figure out how we can help them. But if this is part of it, then we'll be, I'll be supportive. If it's not, then I want to know that. I want to know what they think is the answer. This, this may be, I don't know. I just think that we're having this meeting to say we want to hear from them of how we can help, and these are ways we can help. It's through legislation. I just want to be able to be clear that we're there to listen and, and to hear and try to act on some of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator President.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Two abstentions. Affirmative recommendation. Thank you. That, that takes us to our new paper, which is Bill 380, and I'm going to ask for a motion to withdraw, and this is at the request of Public Safety.
Bill, Bill 380.
Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, along with the Directors of the Department of Public Safety and Public Works, to enter on behalf of the city into a lease agreement or agreements with WAG 2 LLC for the property located at 510 McDonald Street for a cost not to exceed $1,080,550.
Motion to table.
Second.
Uh, we need a roll call vote, Madam President. I'm clerk, sorry.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Cal Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, Chair.
Aye.
Ayes eight, no zero.
The bill has been tabled. That moves us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. We have one new paper, Bill 375.
Bill 375, Resolution for the Amending Resolution Number 840, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capitol Budget, the 2020 CDBG Program, and the 2020 through 2025 Capitol Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements, Sports Facilities by $100,000, and Increasing Play Area Improvements by $100,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. We have one deferred paper, Bill 65.
Bill 65, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 863, entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2019 CDBG Program by Transferring Remaining Funds from the James Street Step Reconstruction Project to the North Side Christian Health Center, $76,000, and Traffic Common, $14,220.54.
Motion to hold one week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held one week. At this time, Councilman Wilson, will you please be willing to make a motion to waive the rules of council so that Bill 190 can come back to the table?
Uh, yes. Motion to waive the rules of council for, uh, Bill 190, so it can be, um, put back on the table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So, now we'll need a motion to approve Bill 190.
Motion to approve.
With discussion.
Was 190 read?
Yeah, could we, yeah, thank you. May we have the reading of the bill, please?
Yes.
Bill 190, Resolution Providing for the Designation as, as a Historic Building Under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances, the certain site known as the Tito House, located at 1817 Fifth Avenue and 1818 Coldwell Street in Uptown in the 3rd Ward of the city. The owners of the property are opposed to the nomination.
All right, so, so motion to approve with discussion, Councilman? Wilson?
Sub moved.
Second?
Second.
I'll, I'll, I'll do discussion.
Second.
All tho, all right. So, can, can, will you defer so I can explain?
I'd like to defer to the Chair.
Thank you. So, for everyone, um, this is a bill that I've been holding intentionally for some time now. The, the community has proposed this as a historic property. However, there's, the owners of it are opposed to it, and there's also a potential development that is attached to this site. The lawyers for both the community group and the potential developers and the family who owns it have been in negotiations, and they've been trying to work through essentially a settlement agreement where a portion of it would be preserved as historic, and a portion of it would not be. But they're, they've been going back and forth over the last few weeks trying to reach an agreement. However, according to our city clock, we, as a body, must vote this by June 6th, meaning our final vote needs, needs to take place by next week. Otherwise, it'll be deemed disapproved because it came over from the plant, from the Historic Review Commission did not approve this being historic. The Plant and Commission did. So, if we do not act, it'll be deemed disapproved. I believe the body needs to act one way or the other, right? And so, I believe we do need to vote it. With that being said, I have spoken to our law department. What they have also said is if we take a preliminary vote today, if the two parties are still trying to work through this agreement and do not have resolution by Tuesday, the nominator can send a letter to council asking to waive the rules so that we can extend it, and that they're not bound by the deadline of voting by June 6th. So, what I will do, starting this afternoon, is get back on the phone with both parties, see if we can reach a deal, because we may need to amend it to make some part historic, some part not historic, because there's the home, and then there's the warehouse that sit behind it. And for anyone who has not paid attention, this is essentially where the owners of Rolling Rock started selling rolling rock. So, that's part of what makes it historic.
And people.
So, with that being said, I'll also just add my personal two cents, which is, I probably would not vote to, I, in my personal opinion, I probably would not vote to make it historic. However, the community that I represent is wholeheartedly behind making it historic, and I do believe my job is to represent their interests. I will be voting in favor of making it historic. So, we'll get-
Mr. Chair?
I have Councilman Kraus, then I'll, Councilman Coghill, because he's online, it's easier. I have Councilman Kraus, then I'll, Councilman Coghill, because he's online, it's easier.
And Councilwoman Kraus.
And Councilwoman Gross.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chair, thank you. I, so if we're permitted to offer a personal opinion, my thought is exactly as yours. I was, I was of the school of thought, which is rare, that I would not support the historic designation of this property. However, I believe, as you believe, that I, there are times when I have to put my personal thoughts behind and lobby for the wishes of the community that I was sent here to represent. And while I may not feel as strongly as they, I do believe we have a moral and I'd even say sacred obligation to carry the will of the people we represent to this table. And so I continued to struggle with this until you offered up what I think can be a really amicable solution, which is to preserve parts of it as historic. We faced this challenge, Councilman. I think you might have just joined the council. If you remember the expansion of Point Park up Fourth Street and taking the old Honda's Wagner storefront as part of their new community development, and that was quite contentious because of the history that that building has and especially that facade, because really the other building only had facade, as it was part of a row of businesses. But ultimately, agreements were reached where that facade was actually taken, restored, and reinstalled as part of the development, as art, if you will, an art installation. And everybody could come to an agreement and believe that was the right thing to do. In fact, I think there were several storefronts saved there, and I believe we have done that. Again, it just escapes me when. But I, having heard your remarks, I, I'm infinitely more comfortable in voting in support of the, of the will of the community, especially since there's a willingness to negotiate and preserve that which is preservable and make it part of the new installation. So if you call for the vote today, I will, I will vote in favor of the nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, then Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for clarifying your position on this. Just a couple of questions. Does the community group have funding in place to restore this building if it were to be preserved?
So that's part of the discussion. As of right now, no, they do not.
They do not.
Part of the agreement that they're trying to reach with the potential developer is that if they are not able to raise the money in a certain amount of time, I think right now we're looking at about two years, then it could potentially revert to the developer. Because one of the concerns is, okay, you preserve this, but then it just sits in the same state of disrepair that it's been for the last twenty years, thirty years or so. So that's part of what's, the sort of negotiation is back and forth. They're trying to settle, how long can you have this by not also be able to rehab it and restore it and bring it back to life?
And can I ask you, are the current owners who are opposing this, are they local product or is this an LLC out of town?
They are out of town.
Is that right?
The original owners were local to the region. However, you're dealing with now children who have moved away. The other part that didn't really get into is the community group has also filed for a conservatorship over this, and they did that a few years ago. So that's also sort of part of what is being negotiated out, because the judge at the time told the two parties, the ownership and the community group, you all go work this out. And so they're also, again, trying to work this out as we go through this process.
Right. I guess what I'm asking is, are the owners, current owners, are they developers or are they just children of the?
They're children, they're children of the, they're the children of the owners. The owners were the parents. The parents passed away. They received the property. They want no parts of the property. They have an agreement in place to sell it to a developer.
Got it. Okay, okay, that's fine. I'll be voting no today for the property owners. Thank you.
Councilman Burgess.
I'm sorry. We are going to vote it today and then hope they may extend this. Is that what you're saying?
They may. We, our deadline is June 6.
Yeah.
And so I apologize to council. In my mind, I was thinking we had to take the initial vote by June 6. When I double-checked with the clerk, we need the final vote by June 6. So in my mind, I was still trying to find an additional week to negotiate, but that's why we had to bring it back up today.
The only thing, the only thing, well, I'm going to vote no because I never vote, obviously. But the other problem, I think, for those who want it, you also make it more difficult to raise the money to do anything with it, because you're limited now on what you can do with it. So if you make it historic, if you, if the goal is to rehab it and preserve it, sometimes in this case, in other cases, actually nominating it will be a barrier, because you're limited on how you can develop it, right? If you leave it alone, you could, you could do, you'd have options on what to do with it, right? And how to spend the money and, and, you know, take this wall down, that wall down, reconfigure it, keep the memory. But once you make it historic, then you're locked into, to not doing any structural, external structural things to the property and without, I just think, and I guess, you know, it's your, it's your district, and normally I would defer to you, but if the, I have a sort of in stone rule about this, that if the property, I believe, and I have others who agree, when you do not own a property, when you make something historic, it is a taking of rights from the property owner. It is directly the taking of a rights. And I get really uncomfortable because, because I have just seen, first of all, I've seen this process used in a, in a way that was somewhat racist. I get really uncomfortable when, when community people decide to take rights away from individuals, because that's the slippery slope, because I think that the majority does not always make right. And taking away, and, and so I think that, again, before, I'll say this over and over again, I believe, and maybe I'll write legislation again, I haven't, but only because I don't know if there's the will to pass it. I believe that the only way we should take the rights of a property owner as a city is if we're willing to pay fair market value for that property, so that when we take their rights, we give them the option, they may not choose to sow it, but if we're going to take away their rights, we should compensate them with the fair market value of the price of those rights, because we are literally taking away their rights to develop that property. And so I will vote no every time.
Thank you. And I apologize, because Councilwoman Gross was supposed to be next. So, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I am happy to support the nomination for the Tito House, and I'm happy that Councilman Lavelle is choosing to support, no, I think that my camera is working, sorry. Happy to support the nomination of the Tito House. I am happy that Councilman Lavelle is supporting the, as he said, overwhelming wishes of his community, and that he has worked, it sounds like to me creatively, between multiple parties, interested parties, and also our city law department, both to meet our required deadlines, but then to try to come to a happy compromise, right? And so thank you, Councilman Lavelle, for not just standing on ideological grounds like some councilmembers, but working to productively move forward a project that may be best for all parties. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, I guess second round.
Second.
Second round, second round for my own self. I'll simply say I actually agree with Councilman Burgess. However, my struggle was I have an entire community that is 100% supportive of this. And so I sort of have to take off my own hat, wear my councilman hat, where I'm here to represent those individuals, which is why I will be supporting this today. But I completely understand your position as well, and normally I'd be on your side. With that being said, I've also said to the developer who has an interest in this property, even if we negotiate this out and we preserve the home, you agreed to demolish the warehouse, and we sort of work this out, it actually doesn't mean the development is automatically going to be approved, because it's got to go through its own process. And as of right now, really just proposing student housing, which is the most profitable thing you can do in the city of Pittsburgh right now, but it's not necessarily in the biggest interests of the community. So that'll be a whole nother battle that we may or may not see at this table, but just providing full clarity. Councilman Kraus and President Smith?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to sort of expand on my earlier remarks and the sacred obligation to carry the will of people to this table, I really should have added, unless, of course, the will of the people is immoral, illegal, or unethical, it's not a blank check that we bring here, but I, you know, I just thought that I better make that clarification to the remarks, but I stand by everything else I said. Thank you.
Thank you. President Smith?
Thank you, and thanks for those comments, Councilman. I just want to say that I typically agree with Reverend Burgess too, and I still do pretty much on this one as well. But I do know that there was about 200 residents, and so I really admire how you're taking the stand for your residents over what you really believe, because you represent them. So I want to thank you for that. But the person who grew up in this house, lives in my district, you know, Cindy Falvo, so I do want to mention that. So maybe we can talk to them about helping with it.
Yeah. So with that, Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call vote. I think we're going to have numerous.
Mm-hmm.
No, no, no.
Mr. Coghill?
No.
Second of three.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Mrs. Kelsmith?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair?
Aye.
Ayes six nos two.
So that'll be an affirmative recommendation, and hopefully we'll figure something out by Tuesday, we'll have a compromise. Thank you all for allowing me to do that. So that will now take us to our Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. We have one new paper, Bill 381.
Bill 381, Resolution Amending Resolution 540, which authorizes the mayor and director of innovation and performance on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement and/or amendments with Planet Technologies for essential support and maintenance services for the continued operation of the city's SaaS email and data file collaboration to increase the authorized contract amount by $99,000. To continue SaaS email and data file services from Planet Evolve to access the Microsoft library for training, reporting, and customized materials to provide Office 365 and Azure administrative and managed services support, and provide a block of hours for resolution of the Microsoft multi-tenant Azure issues.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman?
Thank you. I believe we have either Dolly or Gwen or both from IMP.
Yes, I'm available.
Thank you. I think you can do a better job of describing this bill and explaining it than I can, if you'd, if you'd be willing to state your name and your title and a brief explanation of the bill.
Yes, I'm Gwendolyn Moore. I'm Assistant Director of Business Technology with the Department of Innovation and Performance. And we currently utilize Office 365 for all of our Microsoft applications, such as your email, Excel, access to all the different type of Microsoft services. We, as a result of us not having the staff onboard to provide training in the very beginning with, when we started the contract, we contracted with Evolve to provide training for all of our Office 365 services. In addition, we have multiple Office 365 applications for which we do not have internal support at a higher level, I should say expert support. So from time to time, we do need to ask Planet to assist us in designing Azure services or specialized services for which we do not have staff onboard to do for us. We currently have about 1,600 registered users who take training classes with Evolve from time to time, and that is available for all city employees, and we would encourage employees to utilize that service when they have questions with respect to using the different features of the Office 365 applications.
Thanks, Gwen, I appreciate it. I know that sometimes there's a lack of understanding of what some of our new contracts or extension of contracts are about, so I appreciate that, that explanation. Just wanted to make sure we had that from members. I have no further questions.
Thank you. President Smith?
Thank you. I just have a question, Gwen. Last week, I think it was, there was a couple emails that went out about almost all of public safety being out, the emails being out. And I'm just curious, what do you do in a case like that? I don't know if I want you to say it on TV, but what do you do in a case like that? Was anything related to what we're doing today for the emails to that break down?
I was on vacation last week, so I'm not ultimately familiar with that, but I do believe that was a network issue and not an application issue.
Okay.
In this case, we're talking about supporting the application itself, not the network for which to provide transmission and connectivity.
So I'd really like to have some conversations about, about some of that stuff, because I'm curious what we do when those things happen, because, I mean, when I kept seeing police, fire, EMS, even more, I just, I couldn't believe I was watching it all shut down. And so I thought, I mean, that is a huge concern for the public safety.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
I do believe it was a connectivity issue, and it was something that was being addressed by DQE, but I can get more answers for you if you would like to discuss that.
Yeah, I don't necessarily want an email, but I think maybe if Councilwoman Strasburger can maybe get us the information, that would be probably the best way to share it with council, so that it's not circulating somewhere else.
I have.
Yes, I'll ask our infrastructure team to provide the information.
Okay, thank you, thank you both.
Thank you. Any further discussion, first round? If not, second round, Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, just to say that, to answer the council president's question, I have an email that I was able to find from Director Norman, and I'll forward it to all of council, or I can forward it to you, to forward to all of council, whatever.
I know that they send something. I'm curious what they do in a backup plan. That's what I'm curious, what's the backup plan, when our public safety goes down.
Mm-hmm, got it, understood, understood.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Gross. First supplemental paper is Bill 398.
Bill 398, Resolution for the Amending Resolution Number 840, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capitol Budget, the 2020 CDBG Program, the 2020-2025 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Public Safety Training Facilities by $191,910 and Increasing Major Developments by $191,910."
Mr. Chair, would you mind having the clerk also read Bill 0377 so that these two bills can be considered together?
Yes, that is our last bill, Madam Clerk. Bill 377.
Bill 377, Resolution for the Amending Resolution Number 863, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capitol Budget, the 2019 CDBG Program, the 2019-2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Public Safety Training Facilities by $808,090 and Increasing Major Developments by $808,090."
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These bills are both for adding funds to changes to Penn Circle, Miss LaBrie, that have been a very, very long time in planning. I don't know if other members have questions. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Thank you. Madam President?
I'll defer to Councilman Kraus, because he mentioned the question I have yesterday.
Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. Chief Pollock is here with us this morning. I'd like to ask him to come forward and thank him for the time that he gave yesterday in explaining this to me and raising my comfort level with being able to pass these bills. So, Mr. Chief, or Director Pollock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilman Jake Pollock, Director of Office Management Budget. So the changes being proposed here today are drawing, pardon me, funds from two separate budget years, 2019 and 2020 respectively, that currently reside within those years' capital budgets for the build-out of the proposed public safety facility on the former Veterans Affairs Hospital. on the former Veterans Affairs Hospital site in Lincoln Lemington, Velmar, um, and instead deploying those funds to close a funding gap for the scheduled two-way conversion of Penn Avenue in East, pardon me, Penn Circle in East Liberty. Um, for some general context, um, these funds were appropriated in prior budget years for use of the buildout of the former VA site called the Safety Facility, which remains a project that the administration continues to work on and plan for, therefore, however. It is simply unavoidably true that we do not have concrete plans to deploy these funds within this budget year. We continue to work with the Departments of Public Safety and Public Works to devise appropriate plans for how to utilize that site to support the needs of the public safety bureaus and the department generally. As, as council members are well aware, there are significant restrictions on the ways in which that site can be used that are covenants in the way in which the property was conveyed to us by the federal government. And that those plans, while still in process, are simply not in a place in which we would be in a position to execute agreements or otherwise encumber these funds within the current budget year. On the, on the other side of that coin, we have a shovel-ready project to complete the long-awaited two-way conversion of Penn Avenue in the same council district that are simply, that are ready to go but for the need of approximately a million dollars in additional funding, slightly more than that in the final accounting. Those cost increases above what was previously allocated in the capital budget when it was passed in December are driven by labor and material cost escalations that have occurred since then, as is a common feature of many capital projects this year. Um, if we were able to move these funds now, we can lock in the 90-day pricing that we received earlier this year. If we cannot do so in the very near future, we expect to incur additional price increases as the pricing we received early in the first quarter expire, which will only increase the cost of the project and potentially delay delivery even further. So we're requesting this transfer so that we can complete the shovel-ready project and that has been promised to the community for some time and is um, and sort of a gating element to a number of other uh operational and development uh projects in the area. We would, we fully intend to continue to pursue the VA site project and will uh in some form, you know, pending further conversation and discussion and potential discussion with the federal government on refinement of the criteria there such that we can, you know, fit it within our operational needs. But again, that process will take some time. Um, if and when we're ready to proceed with that, we will happily fund that project in future capital budget years. But it seems prudent to us at this time to take dollars that we realistically were not going to be able to spend this fiscal year and deploy them to a shovel-ready project that is ready to go but for the need for about a million dollars in additional funding. So that's the rationale behind this proposed change. Appreciate council's consideration. Happy to answer any further questions about that.
Yeah, thanks, Director. I appreciate your, your explanation and not to oversimplify. I just want to make certain that anyone listening understands that this, the funding, uh, the funds are an opportunity to be replenished in further budgets. Uh, and just because we are making the transfer at this point in time does not mean that we are somehow abandoning the project in any way. The optics of not investing in public safety at a time when clearly the news is consistently about public safety is not the kind of message any of us, the administration or the council, wishes to see go out there. But it, it is, and again, not to oversimplify, correct me if I'm wrong, we're at risk of losing the funds if they're not expended. Is that correct? Yes?
That is correct. We're, we're, we're talking about 2019 and 2020 bond funds. Um, you know, as a, as a best practice, we would expend bond funds between 18 and 24 months after they are raised through the, the capital market. So these funds are, uh, they're, they're rapidly becoming stale, if I could, if I could use that analogy. So we're simply looking to capture funds that were raised through prior year bond issuances to fund the shovel-ready project um in order to ensure that we're not sitting on those funds for too long. An important feature of thinking about capital budget funding, right, is that, um, you know, when we issue debt to support projects, we have kind of fiduciary obligation to spend them relatively quickly. If for understandable um operational impediments, that means we can't do so on the schedule we originally anticipated, um, reallocating them to a project that's ready to go is not an indication that we don't continue to prioritize the previous project, but simply that we need to refresh the way in which we're financing it. So this is not a project, but rather handling the financing cycle. Um, I, I should also note, just to the point that you raised, Councilman, that this does not in any way impede the Department of Public Safety's operational readiness. Any of the uses that were proposed, the, the purpose of the VA site was to consolidate um a number of public safety services and facilities that are presently distributed across the city. I think that that remains a worthy goal and one worth continued exploration. But there are no necessary operational readiness issues from not proceeding with that this year because all of the facilities that would prospectively be relocated there continue to exist elsewhere in um, in, in a, in a ready state. So Police Headquarters is still functional on the north side. All the training facilities exist in the Lakeview Run Valley. Obviously, it will be, it is important to the city to relocate those facilities out of that flood plain in, in a medium term. But we would not be in a position where we could not conduct any vital public safety activities, training, or other operational readiness procedures by delay of this project. Frankly, um, if we did not move these funds to Penn Circle this year, we still would not be in a position to deliver enhanced facilities on the VA site by December 31st, and we would also not be able to complete the workup at Penn Circle. So by, by making this move, we are delivering a shovel-ready project, but we are not impairing operational readiness at all.
I appreciate. Thanks, Director Pollock. Uh, and again, not to oversimplify, our, our commitment to our training, our public safety training facility remains strong and is, is unshakable. Uh, and, uh, and the funds are replenishable, if that's actually a word, for future consideration. So thanks, Director. I really appreciate you being here this morning and appreciate the time you took to explain this to me yesterday. And for that, Mr. Chair, I have no further uh comment. Thank you.
Thank you. President Smith?
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a few things. You, Director. So I just want to be clear, the mayor is committed to the completion of the public safety training facility as soon as possible?
We, we certainly need new facilities for public safety training. Um, the, the existing training facilities are in a, uh, an area that is subject to flooding and is, uh, you know, again, and I would say in the medium term, uh, we, we need that space to address that flooding issue with stormwater infrastructure. So we need to relocate those training facilities in the medium term as that other project continues to advance in conjunction with PWSA and the Army Corps of Engineers. So, so yes, I, I do think that in order to make full use of the VA site, some discussion with our federal partners around the finer, the fine print, if you will, of the restrictions may be warranted in order to ensure we can maximize the efficiency of what we relocate there. And that is a, a process that we have under, we've begun to ensure that we can construct, you know, future facilities there that meet the general needs of the city, public safety being the primary one, but uh, other needs also that are collateral to that, but can achieve greater efficiency by being co-located with that. We need to kind of fight to get some of that. So we are committed to finding a new home for our public safety training facilities that meets their needs um in a way that is better than what we can currently offer at the existing facilities um and does not run the same flooding risk that the current facilities have. So that, that is, that is an affirmative. Absolutely. It's a, that's a definite yes.
So the mayor's committed to the completing the public safety training facility. One of the reasons I'm asking is because I actually, this is actually my only contribution to Act 47 as I put it in the plan, is that we would have a public safety training facility. And it actually came from Chief Harper at the time. And he was unable to get the credit for it. So I want to make sure every time it comes up that I mention that this was his idea. And it was a really great idea because one of the reasons I put it in the plan was because you can, um, you can actually charge people to come in and be trained by our, um, by our professionals and use that money for other things like maybe um, police community relationship building, um, some programs that maybe that stop the violence stuff. So the, the funding could be used in other ways. So to help support um some of the different initiatives that you like to see here. So I just want to make sure that I mention this because I think that's a, a way to get some things done. And um, the only other thing I'm going to ask is there, in the same, on the same lines of public safety, um, unrelated to this funding here, but is there, are you going to put it, can you tell us when there'll be a class put on for the Pittsburgh Police?
Not prepared to answer that question right now, but we will be making um, uh, additional information about that available very in the future.
Very shortly. Okay. Well, I just want to be honest, and I've heard different things. I've heard that you're going to hire people with experience that may not need to go through a class, but that's in the, caught up in the law department. I heard that you are absolutely putting on a class. We only got 40 people to apply. So I think that council wants to know. I think the residents want to know what the status is. So as soon as we can know that, that'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Second. Uh, again, round. That's okay. It's fine. I'll, I'll take it offline. Thank you, Director, or Mr. Chair.
Thank, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Uh, that takes us to Bill 399.
Bill 399, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 796, entitled, Resolution Authorizing Incorporation Agreement with the URA in connection with the URA's application for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant of up to $1 million for the Oliver Bath House Rehabilitation Project to increase the grant amount up to $2 million in authorized spending.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I'll defer to the name for that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Director Pollock, would you come back? Please? Thank you very much. Um, we, I, I, first of all, I want to recognize and thank previous administration and current administration for their steadfast dedication to the rehabilitation and preservation of the Oliver Bath House. It is truly an institution in South Pittsburgh. We ran the risk of actually losing the building because of structural concerns, and there was at one time a strong possibility we could actually demolish the building. Uh, but again, uh, the previous administration, very, very strong, strong commitment to the preservation of the building. And I see, which pleases me greatly, a continued uh commitment for the current administration for the preservation of the Oliver Bath House. We have secured a staggering amount of money through grants and, uh, capital, I believe, some capital applications as well. Could you, and I know you have a million things on your plate, could you send a briefing or at least let me know who I should connect with to offer up a briefing in writing just for members in general to understand where we are on the project, how many dollars we truly have committed over the years to the project, and a possible timeline by which the structural deficiencies we could expect the beginning of abate. Um, and I don't expect you to do that here, but if you could.
So Councilman, I actually believe that Director Hornstein is also on the call. I'm prepared to speak to that, to some of those latter questions about construction timeline. Uh, while he's doing that, I can check a few things on the, the financing. And if I can't give you a full answer today, I could certainly provide that in writing after. But with your permission, I'd like to defer to him on an update on the project schedule.
That's great, Director. Thank you so much. Director Hornstein, good morning. Welcome. Where'd you go? There you are.
Good morning.
Good morning, welcome.
To the que, to the questions you're asking about the Oliver Bath House, I know that we're preparing, um, you know, we are in the process with um, the contractors and PLI to do our construction documents, um, getting permits um there with the hope that we're going to be going out to bid for construction very soon. Uh, I'm happy to give them much more, like, fully detailed briefing offline um as I talk to my staff and get a more um accurate prediction of where we'll be. I know in our conversations internally that, you know, like everyone, there's going to be some supply chain challenges that we're going to have to deal with. But like, as you said, this is a really exciting project that we're all, can't wait to get off, to get started and get on board because I think it's just a great example of a lot of different people coming together um through the state, through the community, um, all levels of government and community to like make this happen and save this asset.
Yeah, so I'm happy to go offline with you, Director, for briefing. But at the same time, it is because of the support of my colleagues that this project continues. And so in, in respect of my colleagues, I really would like to be able to have something to share with everybody across the board as to why this project continues to be so very important. Uh, and again, just to show respect for their, for my appreciation for their continued support of this project because we're applying millions and millions and millions of dollars to this project.
Um, can we, can we agree to do that? Um, you know, give my team a chance to kind of prepare that package for you and agree to do that kind of next week at the table?
Absolutely, absolutely. Take your time. I, I know, I know we're committed. I just want to be able to um, bring my fellow colleagues up to speed. That's all.
Absolutely. We're ha, we're happy to do so.
Thanks, Director. Appreciate it. Director Pollock, I see you're back.
This is, as a brief note, um, $1 million in bond funding were, uh, in 2022, bond funding were allocated to this project. It is part of a composite facility improvement line item in the capital budget that has $10 million, $10.6 million and change in unexpended prior authorizations. I think by the time Director Hornstein is prepared to speak to the update on the operational side, I can give you a more complete accounting of how much of that prior year authorization is slated for this project. But know that, as you yourself pointed out, we are, we are compiling funding from a variety of sources, including, on the topic today, RCAP support to ensure that we can complete this project um in a way that is, you know, that honors the historic contribution and nature of this facility to our state.
Yeah, Oliver Bath House was a bath house. When the steel mills began, uh, it was a communal bath house. That was the function of Oliver Bath House and the reason it was built. Uh, so it does, I won't belabor this. It has a tremendous history in this neighborhood and a love of, of people here probably unsurpassed in any facility that we, we have here in, in the South Bayland. So I appreciate your help and your dedication. I won't take any more time. And appreciate Councilwoman Gross's willingness to put this on the agenda today. Thank you very much. And I thank my colleagues for their support. Thank you.
Thank you. President Smith?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to Councilman Cross because one of the reasons everybody is so supportive and is because of you. You're a strong advocate and, and really do amazing job. I told you and Reverend before, when people talk about, you know, needing change and, um, you know, wanting something, I don't think people understand what it means to have the institutional knowledge and things that you two bring to the table. And so I just want to make sure that I acknowledge that, that your hard work as well. But I also want to say that I think it gives a lot of credit to the administration because one of the things our residents gets frustrated with is sometimes they do want to vote for somebody different. Sometimes they do want to vote um for somebody, Sometimes they do want to vote for somebody, but they don't. They don't understand that some of their projects are at risk or that their people that they like working with are at risk. And I want to give the administration some credit for that because they have kept projects on on the table and that they are moving them forward and they are also kept a lot of people. And I think that that speaks volumes to the residents. I think it's important. So I just want to say thank you to both to both of you for your work. Thank you.
Thanks, Reverend President. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Move us toward the further papers, Bill 286.
Bill 286, Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Intert Municipal Transfer of a Restaurant Liquor License from Comer Pub to the Applicant Pasha Cafe for the premises located at 808 Ivy Street, known as the Pasha Cafe pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code 4461.
Question to approve?
Second.
Second, very brief discussion?
Discussion, Councilman Cross?
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, is this yours or is this Councilman or Congress's? Yours, right?
Yep, this is in District Eight.
Just curious to your thoughts. That's all, Councilwoman.
I'm in full support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Takes us to our last bill, Bill 376.
Bill 376, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 661 entitled, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 432, Authorizing a Corporation Agreement or Agreements with the City, the U R A, and the Pittsburgh Land Bank to provide for future shared administrative services and the transfer of property among agencies for governmental redevelopment and portfolio management purposes by providing for city council review of the policies and procedures of the Pittsburgh Land Bank pursuant to 174A13D of the Pittsburgh of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances to authorize an amendment to the corporation agreement.
Question to approve a discussion?
Second.
I'd like to bring Dr. Pollak to the table, back to the table. There you are again. Nice to see you again. And if you could provide us with a brief description of what is going on here. The land bank and our vacant properties have once again been alive in people's conversations and in media. And and so I think it'd be better to to get a deeper understanding of what you're proposing here.
So the proposed amendment to the cooperation, excuse me, cooperation agreement is relatively simple. The existing cooperation agreement allows for the transfer of properties from the land bank to the U R A, the city, and other partners, but does not allow for the transfer of properties from those partners to the land bank. That ability to transfer properties to the land bank is necessary in order to take advantage of the land bank's expedited powers to clear title so that those properties can then be disposed of through a number of means, including transfer back to the originating body, but with clear title for the purposes of disposition. So this this requested authorization to amend the agreement would simply make what is presently a one-way street into the, I'm sorry, a one-way street out of the land bank into a two-way street in order to allow for the efficient administrative transfer of properties into the body equipped to clear title in advance of future disposition by the land bank itself or by other entities within the this closed circle of cooperative bonds. So.
I'm going to clarify a little bit of what you just said. You said the original cooperation agreement that stands currently allows only for the transfer of properties from the land bank to, for example, the city or to other entities like the U R A or the housing authority.
Housing authority is not a party to this agreement, so not applied to the housing authority. But your your underlying point is correct. It only allows.
I'm just trying to restate what you said. I wasn't making a point. So my point is this, we did actually transfer a property from the city to the land bank, one property. The difference between what you said and what I'm saying is that we did it at the council table.
Sure.
So what you are proposing here, if I'm following you, is that the city inventory, which numbers some 14,000 properties versus the land bank inventory, which currently is one property. You're proposing an amendment to this cooperation agreement so that properties may be transferred from the city's 14,000 property inventory to the land bank without council approval. Is that correct?
Without individual approval, yes, that is correct. It would be instead of approval through this.
The legislation that you have in front of us today would allow you to draft a cooperative agreement that would not allow the transfer of any and all properties without any council approval.
Subject to the terms.
Very violent language.
Subject to the terms of the amended agreement, yes, that will be correct.
Right. And we're giving you permission now to just amend the agreement is what you're asking for.
Correct.
Right. So I I can't say that I'm comfortable with that, right? So I would be dearly disappointed if we pass this legislation as written to allow you to amend the co-op in any way, shape, or form that you so please. And then, you know, we passed it finally Tuesday, and then you all create a cooperative agreement. And then without anyone knowing, it citywide transferred 14,000 city properties into the land bank.
I understand that concern. I I would say that by nature of the parties to the agreement, transfers into the land bank for that purpose would be conducted for the purposes of clearing title, which is not something that the the real estate division from the treasurer's office in in finance is capable of doing on as expeditious a timeline. Transfers then by virtue of the existing language in the agreement could occur from the land bank to another party within the scope of the agreement for ultimate disposition. So the there are protections, I guess I should say, embedded in the the structure of the parties to the agreement that that allow for further public process on the ultimate disposition. The purpose of the transfers in this case would be to expedite the process of clear title. But I do understand.
You can say that verbally, but we're not requiring you to to be bound by what you just said with the language that's in front of us right now. So that's an issue that I have. And I just remember, I would like to say that I liked to catch these things earlier than I did, and I apologize that I've been dealing with COVID, my COVID in my household. And now I've currently COVID positive, so that's why I've been out. And I didn't catch this concern until late in the in the week. And so we're just talking about it here now. And I like to propose a kind of tighter resolution, right? It just requires some tightening up of the resolution language, right? I'm I'm supportive of something better than is what's happening now, which is not, you know, what has been happening for the last eight years with the land bank is not making anyone happy anywhere. And so what that there we should all strive together to figure out what will make things work better. And I think is if you seek common ground, find I find the language of this resolution just too broad. And so that, you know, I'm supportive of what you're telling us at the table, but I would like to see that reflected in the language somehow. And also, I think we're all eager to talk more about what the new administration sees as the potential for and priorities for all of the vacant properties that we have, again, some 14,000 vacant properties that are actually on the city. A lot of times, the public and even the media think that our vacant properties that you see, the thousands of them across the city are held by the Urban Redevelopment Authority. That is not true. It is in the hundreds. It's certainly less than 1,000. And that the city is the agent on the deed for some 14,000 properties that are vacant or abandoned. Some some structures, some without, mostly without, actually, mostly vacant property. So I'm going to propose that maybe we hold this, maybe we can tweak the language. I see there are the members who are so eager to ask their questions, so I'll just stop there for now. Thank you, Mr. Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
Councilman Cross, followed by President Smith?
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Gross, if you remember, this was your first vote. Do you remember that when you came in?
No, it was not.
Wasn't it?
Bill. This is my bill.
That's no, no, stand corrected. It was your first bill.
Yeah, we signed it in April of 2014.
Is that nine, nine years? Eight years, eight years, eight years. So Director Pollak, thank you again for spending your morning with us. I am grateful to Councilwoman Gross for bringing this to the forefront. It it gives me concern to, in terms of transparency, we're we're talking about neighborhoods here, not just individual plots of property, but communities that we could inadvertently, and, you know, I don't mean to demean the the U R A in any way, shape, or form, but turning over entire neighborhoods to to an entity under which we have little to no say. So I but in the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish being that the the land bank clearly has not worked, and I'm not here to lay blame on anyone, but clearly there's enough factors that contributed to the failure of the land bank that we we our our communities deserve better and we need to do better. And I do know that there was lots of difficulties in real estate clearing titles. It was a major obstruction, no question about it. And I would agree with you that the U R A has infinitely stronger support systems to be able to clear titles in a in a faster and more meaningful way. So I guess my question comes to this. What makes it necessary to put the properties in the hands of the U R A to do clear title? And then number two, is there an avenue, when we talk about this back and forth, is there an avenue then to return the properties to the city once title has been cleared? Or is that something we even want to consider?
So a couple of things. One, I think, if I may briefly clarify, Councilman, just to understand, the U R A does not actually have any expedited powers in clearing title. The the land bank does. So there are essentially three different sets of tools or capabilities in this relationship. The city, as Councilwoman Gross rightly pointed out, is the holder of the largest number of parcels. And in many cases, the originator of publicly owned parcels in the sense that when they become tax delinquent, it is the city either acting on its own behalf or as an agent for the free taxing bodies that takes them into public ownership. So we're the source of most publicly owned parcels. The U R A has the most constructive mechanisms for disposing of parcels. Why would that I mean, the city is bound by state law to sell any any real estate that it sells to the highest bidder without respect or acknowledgement of what they intend to to use the parcel for. Whereas the U R A has different procedures that allow it to sell to somebody who's not the highest bidder but is intending to use it for a publicly beneficial use. Neither has any power to expedite the process by which title is cleared. And that's the role that the land bank plays in this in this system, right? By transferring properties that are owned by the city as the most common originator or ones that for legacy reasons are currently in the inventory of the U R A but have continue to have tangled title, which in a perfect world would never happen, right? By the time something reaches the inventory of the U R A, its title should already be clear. There are many properties that don't meet those terms simply because of historic practice and and the fact that the land bank has not been fully stood up. But the 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 goal here in making this a two-way transfer straight would be to allow those entities that are presently in possession of these properties to transfer them to the U R A, I'm sorry, to the land bank for the purpose of clearing title, which it has unique powers to do that neither of the other entities do. To answer your question, they could absolutely, under the current terms. Right, right now, the obstacle is getting properties into the land bank for the purposes of having title cleared because our existing agreement doesn't contemplate that. It only contemplates outward transfer from the land bank to those entities. You know, again, is there a case in which a property would be would be taken into the land bank from the city for the purpose of clear title and then transferred back to the city? Absolutely. If either our objective is to sell it to the highest bidder, which I believe would occur only in a very limited number of circumstances, but is potentially possible. Probably more likely in that instance would be transfer from the land bank to the city for the purposes of some for the purposes of the city constructing some publicly beneficial use, adding it to an existing greenway, adding it to an existing park, constructing a playground, constructing some other public facility. In those instances, it will be beneficial to the city in order to be able to transfer properties into and then back out of the land bank with clear title for the purposes of our public uses. If the ultimate goal is disposition, you know, I I would personally submit that ultimately the the disposition powers of the U R A offer us the best public protection there in that they can opt not to select the highest bidder, but rather the proposer who is proposing a use that's in line with the community's wishes. And again, this is all simply as fundamentally, it is the public disposing of property for the purposes of publicly beneficial use and doing so through the organization or the entity that has the best legal structure under state law to do it in a way that matches the public's desire. So so that's a high level sketch, right, of sort of how these different pieces can work and how the different entities with their different abilities under state law can work together. The city is the generator of new publicly owned parcels. The U R A is the clearer title, I'm sorry, the land bank is the clearer title and the U R A potentially as the disposer of cleared title property in a way that does not have to go to the highest bidder. All of that having been said, I fully recognize and acknowledge your point, Councilwoman, that perhaps further discussion and tighter definition around some of these terms is warranted in order to give council confidence in in the the mechanisms we wish to deploy here. What I've described is our intent, but I I acknowledge that that's not fully described in the text of the resolution itself. So we'd be happy to work with you on amendments or other clarification that document that intent more clearly.
Yeah. And Director, I would I would agree that we need to hang on to this bill. And I would support several briefings by the administration so that we can better understand the kind of decision that we are making. When when I hear terminology like turning property over to the highest bidder, I hear LLCs from out of state that come in and purchase our neighborhoods with no sense of community whatsoever. And you know this, we've had this conversation a million times here at the table. Director, you and I have talked about the, you know, the decimation of 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 neighborhoods. We, you know, I know in the third county district, we exceed 55% of, probably somewhere around 60% rental. Director, correct me, citywide, is it as high 60% rental in in terms of residential property, citywide?
Thereabouts, yes. I I ever take a point or two, but yes, you're certainly in the ballpark, which is a a major inversion of that curve over the past decade. You know, as recently as 10 years ago, we were a majority ownership city, and now we are a majority renter city. The real estate market has changed. I mean, this is a mistake on this call or watching at home, but it bears repeating that the real estate market has transformed dramatically in the past.
Well, it's only a reflection of society. Society's trends drastically. So we've built a number of apartments over the last decade, so that's going to certainly skew the numbers up. But, you know, as we see younger generations coming up and and the desire to stream, if you will, their lives, whether it is transportation, you know, whether it's digital technology or whether it's housing, it's sort of the sort of a temporary platform by which we're not really looking to purchase, put down roads, stay. You know, life is more fluid today. I'll say it that way, and people tend to move quickly. And so it supports the rental market. So I'm not by any means suggesting that rental property is solely a negative because that's not true. That's just simply is not true. But when we see, we, members of council here, see our neighborhoods that over decades have been decimated by the investment of LLCs from across not just the nation but the globe with no investment in community or preservation of that community or or a spirit of involvement or engagement in that community. It it for me, and I know for my colleagues raises a an enormous red flag that we we cannot continue that pattern. So I know other members wish to speak. I'll give you an opportunity, absolutely, Director. But I know this.
Yeah, I just one last thing. I know other members wish to offer comment. We won't call for a hold on the legislation so everybody does have a chance to to make their comments. And that includes you to, Director, whatever you wish to add.
I I I'll be very brief just in response to some of the points you raised, Councilman, and I believe they're all very salient points. At present, well, let me actually take a step back. You raise an excellent point about the limitations on the city's ability to dispose of property in its own right, being limited to the highest bidder. And I will note that it is very much our intention to avoid having to dispose of property in that way and that it is it is a desire to avoid using that disposition mechanism that is motivating us in seeking to advance this this change to the cooperative agreement. I'll also just note that another key factor that has changed here really in the last five years is the enactment of conservatorship legislation by the General Assembly and a rise in conservatorship cases. Those are motivated by a number of different intentions and are being done by a number of different actors. Some of them are extraordinarily well-intentioned nonprofits who are good partners to the city and its various related agencies and seeking. and its various related agencies in seeking to achieve beneficial outcomes. Others are, I would, I guess, at least describe as opportunistic actions by actors who are seeking to gain control of properties that are presently in public control. There are a number of things we can do to limit the exposure to conservatorship cases, one of which is simply getting better as we know we have to do in the maintenance of our properties so that it's harder to make a conservatorship case. On that note, we have, with council's approval in last year's budget, established a land care program for city-owned properties that relies on a wide network of small businesses and local nonprofits to engage in the property maintenance process so that we are doing, we are meeting our obligations to maintain property, keeping the sidewalks clear, keeping the grass cut, keeping the snow clear in winter. And we've already seen in a few short months some significant improvement in the condition of the city's inventory of property because of that. But we remain at risk so long as properties remain in our portfolio for long periods of time. And one of the leading causes of that is the long time in which it takes for us to clear title without a tool like the land bank to be able to assist in those transactions. And then the fact that if it's in our portfolio, meaning that we only have the option of auction, sale, to dispose of it, we often hold properties back from sale in that way because our ultimate intention is to honor community wishes and do a publicly beneficial disposition, which will mean transfer at some point through some mechanism that is not that process. So frankly, there are a lot of parcels that are, for lack of a better term, stuck in the city's inventory for a variety of structural reasons at the moment. That increases our operating liability to maintain them. It increases our risk of a conservatorship case. And it delays our ability to put those parcels back to use in the ways in which communities desire. So we are aiming for process improvements that limit that issue. And that's the intention here, though, again, happy to work with council to build a higher comfort level with the actual procedural steps and safeguards that are in place to achieve that goal. But just understand that that's our intent, right? Is that we now have pretty significant backlog of properties in inventory that are stuck for a variety of reasons, be that title clearance timelines or disposition processes. And streamlining that such that we can avoid those risks is our intention.
Director, do you know offhand who is handling real estate in our law department? Do you know what attorney is assigned to real estate? That's okay.
But I can explain that.
No, I was just, I'm going to ask our council president. I would certainly defer to her leadership to call this. But if we could schedule some briefings to have a better understanding of this bill and ask if we could have our attorney that is engaged in real estate law within our law department to be able to attend those meetings to help us have a better understanding of the decision that we're making. But I know our council president wishes to speak next, so I'll leave the floor and thank Director Pollock for your assistance. I appreciate it.
Thank you, President Smith, followed by Councilman Burgess.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman. Well, I just basically want to hold it for a public hearing and now the briefings. But I do have a lot to say about it because, you know, I hear all these comments about the land and how there's all this land that's waiting and we have tangled titles and all that stuff. But I do remember when I was on the land bank, which Councilman Wilson took my place on there, and I thank him for that. One of the things that somebody approached me about was Duquesne University and U P M C with Paul Getnick offering to do a program to clear the titles for free. It wouldn't take it out of city council's hand. It would keep it, and when I get nervous when you take something out of our hands, it's because then we are the only voice for the community. And you could say you're going to listen to the community, but I think that depends on you identifying who you want to acknowledge as the community. And I think right now, we speak for the whole community because that's what we were elected to do. And so we want to make sure that the public has a real voice. So it's not that council wants to stall or delay some. It's the council wants to make sure our residents continue to have a voice in this process. And one of the reasons I get concerned is because the, I have two communities and it was because of government's involvement that they were decimated. And when I look at some of the things that have happened into Ferrywood, it was not city council that decided that it would not build housing there. It was, it was out of our hands. And so we didn't have a say in it. We couldn't fight. I wasn't here at the time, or I would have fought, but couldn't fight for our residents when they needed something. So that's a huge concern. What I did do is I worked for Pittsburgh Public Schools at the time and helped them with the lawsuit. Don Dugger would come in my office and use the computers there and we'd talk. But I wasn't able to be a voice for them here on council. And I would have fought like heck for them. And now, same with Sheridan, somebody went to jail, I bring this up all the time, went to jail for what government did in Sheridan. So when I have concerns, I remember Ms. Nixon from Ferrywood used to say all the time, "It's a land juice, honey. They want the land. They want the land." And she would say it every meeting and I thought, "Why does she say that?" Well, then I got here and I realized, "It's a land juice issue and they want the land." And so I'm going to be really cautious. I'm never going to vote to take council's voice away because that is taking away the voice of the public. I'll never vote to do that. So what I will say is I would love, I would love to move the properties. I understand that there's some concerns, but truly, I think when people talk about moving the properties, what people really want in their neighborhoods for the most part is for us to fix up the properties, for us to maintain the properties, for us to get, you know, good homeownership in some of the properties. And we're doing that right now through the U R A and through some other projects. Not necessarily they want us to untangle the titles, take their vote away, their voice away, our vote away, and turn those properties into developments. In some areas, they do. In some cases, they might, but not in every case. And I think that's given a blank slate to an entity that does not have a voice of the public on it. And it definitely does not have the people that were elected to represent that area on it. So I'm going to say, I'd like to hold, if members want to wait and have further discussion or if you want to hold for a public hearing or in briefings. Anybody else?
I'd like to make a motion to hold.
I'd like to talk first.
Okay, that's why I didn't know. Okay. And I do want to say, can I just say, I will also add that I know that Councilman Lavelle, Councilman Burgess, and Councilman Wilson do a tremendous job on the land bank. But there are people, let's be clear, there's people on that land bank that are some of the biggest property owners in the city through their organizations. And there's a lot of concern with some of the things they're involved with now. So I want to be really clear that I don't know who all, I know some of the people that sit on the U R A. There's nobody, not one voice from the West End on that board, not one. So I just want to make sure I make that very clear. Thank you.
Councilman Burgess, followed by Councilman Wilson.
First of all, I would like to thank Councilman Lavelle, Councilwoman President Smith, and Councilman Bobby Wilson for their work on the land bank. I have been quiet for many years about the land bank. I also want to thank my chief of staff, Marita Bradley, who has worked tirelessly behind the scenes over these several years. I've been quiet about the land bank for two reasons. One, it was the brainchild of our previous mayor. And two, as a board member, I've been very careful about my public conversation. But if we're going to go down this road and say the land bank is a failure, then I'm going to lay down my marker so that we will all remember. I said from the very beginning that the way the land bank was structured would not work. I introduced a legislation that would work. Counter to my advocacy, counter to my advice, we went down a process that I said from day one would not work. I said it loudly, I said it clearly. It would not work. It did not work. What has happened over the last couple of years is the process that I advocated for the beginning has now become the land bank's process and it is now moving. It was, it was, we tried to do something which was impossible to do in our current structure. And we were met with holdup from people inside the administration, including the law department and former members of the real estate department who were hostile to the land bank's work. And so we spent four or five years, as I predicted, fighting internally as a city. Again, this is my first time saying this publicly. And I watched that process. And I said from the beginning, this was what would happen. It happened exactly as I told you it would. And now we've moved to a realistic process now over the last, probably what, two years now? We changed the complete structure of the land bank. It became the land bank that I advocated for the very beginning. And now it can actually function. That's number one. Two, the U R A has contributed close to a million dollars for land, for clearance of title. One of the reasons that they want to move it to the land bank is we have dedicated money specifically for clearing title, which the city does not have. We have a million dollars in a reserve for almost close to a million dollars to just clear title. So if it comes to us, we will clear the title because we have dedicated funds and a dedicated agency to do that. That's so. So the first thing is, the land bank's failure is predictable. It was, it happened the exactly way I said it would happen. And so until we change to a plan which I advocated for from the beginning, now it's actually working. And I've been quiet about it. I haven't tried to boast or say, "I told you so." But if we're going to talk about failure, I'm going to tell you why it didn't happen and my exact role in it. Second of all, we have the money in the land bank now to clear title. Third of all, and most importantly, and I think we need a briefing perhaps from the land bank, the land bank has also a very detailed disposition process, very, very detailed, more than the city, more than the U R A at this point. So that it is absolutely impossible for the land to be transferred out of the land bank contrary to the public's interest. It's almost impossible to happen. Our guidelines of disposition is too detailed for that. Last but not least, what differs the land bank from the city is this. Once we get the land, we are by law required to maintain it. We cannot hold it and let it sit idle. So if it goes in the land bank, it will be clean, the grass will be cut, there'll probably be a fence up because we're required by law to maintain the properties. So you're not going to see any large movement of land from the city into the land bank because it would make it too cost prohibitive for us, right? We, same reason the city doesn't maintain it, we can't maintain it. What the land bank is designed to do, and the other thing is, the land bank is really not designed, and we can use it, is really not designed for Squirrel Hill, South Side Flats, Shady Side, Mount Washington mostly. It's not designed for those communities. The land bank is an engine designed to go into places where the market is not at. Homewood, Lorma, Lorma is the market's coming, but Lincoln Leamington, parts of the hill, parts of the north side, Bell Sewer, that's going to be the land bank's targeted area. Most of our transactions, lastly, and again, we need to probably have a briefing so you can get caught up with the new land bank. Most of our disposition will go to community-based organizations. The first thing we're working with is the property reserves, hoping though, helping those local community-based organizations clear the title on projects they have already submitted, on land they've already asked for and we've approved, but they've not been able to take title because it's not clear and their program's not fully funded. And so I think I'm okay with the hold. I'm simply saying that I think we need to get, as a council, up to speed with the changes that the land bank has, which are pretty radical over the last probably, I think it's 18 months, two years, something like that, probably 18 months or so. I get, because of COVID, I lose my timeframe. But get caught up with the new land bank, what it does, how it does it, and why it is in many ways the engine that we can utilize to move these properties quickly in areas where there has been disinvestment. And that's the primary goal. And I think homeownership is, I think, and I'm doing it from memory, I'm pretty sure land, I'm pretty sure homeownership by low and moderate income communities, income people is the number way, the number one priority of the land bank. That is, you get the land first. If you're a lower moderate income buyer wanting to be homeownership and use that land for homeownership, I'm about 90% sure in our bylaws, that's the first priority. You get the first priority of that land, even if your bid is lower than other developers. So let's have the briefings. I will order, request, orders are strong. I will request the land bank administrator to come in and provide you with an overview of the new land bank and how it functions, our disposition process, so that we all get more comfortable. With that in mind, we'll be able to intelligently amend this current piece of legislation to make sure that we're all comfortable and it does what we all wanted to do. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the hold. I just think we should use this time to get all caught up to speed so they're all in, we all have an intelligible understanding of how the new land recycling process in the city can work.
Reverend, may I briefly just add something to that?
Sure, of course.
I would just add a point which I made earlier, but it's, I think, salient to the one that you made. The same group of neighborhoods that you named in your comments are also the ones in which we're seeing the greatest number of conservatorship cases, which is a newer development since the land bank was established and has emerged kind of on the same timeline as the changes you raised in the land bank's procedures. And I just, I will note that that adds a unique sense of urgency in some of these cases in order to maintain public and community control of some of these parcels. So I just sort of wanted to add that to the mix along the other very salient points you raised about the way in which this can be beneficial. But thank you.
Any further discussion?
Do you have a motion, President?
Yeah, I just, I'm going to make a motion. I want to hold for a post-agenda and a public hearing, but I think Councilwoman Groves wants to hold the bill. So I'm going to make a motion to, for a public hearing and post-agenda. And I'll let Councilwoman Groves make the motion to hold for however long.
Well, let's do it in reverse. Let's deal with the bill first and then we'll take your motion under resolution. So Councilwoman Groves?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So separately from Councilwoman Smith's motion for post-agenda and public hearing, I think that we should allow some time to have the kinds of briefings that members have been asking for to get a more fulsome understanding of all of the different moving parts here, what is the co-op agreement, what are the land bank's priorities, and come up to speed, as Councilman Burgess suggested. So I'll motion to hold this bill for three weeks.
Second.
All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held three weeks. That exhausts our agenda for today. We do have announcements and then we'll take your motion, Madam President. On Thursday, June 2nd, with sessions at 3:00 and 3:30, council will hold a briefing with the Port Authority of Allegheny County to receive updates on the Bus Rapid Transit project. Next week, council will hold our regular, regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, June 7th and Wednesday, June 8th, respectively. Speaker registration closes at 9:00 a.m. Tuesday and Wednesday mornings. On Tuesday, June 1st, at 1:30 p.m., council will hold an executive session relative to inclusionary zoning. On Wednesday, June 8th, at 1:30 p.m., council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill 291 as relates to the conditional use application for the 306 Avenue development. To register to speak at the council meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Do we have other comments from members, Madam President?
Yes, I just want to say that my concerns are not with the land bank, but they are with the U R A and overall just leaving city council out of this equation. But when you talk about, you know, community groups and CDCs, I just always keep in mind that I turned one into the IRS and the FBI and they were shut down. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. I don't have a lot of trust there. So with that said, I'd like to have a motion for a public hearing and a post-agenda and for the bill for the land bank.
Second.
Yeah, I can't remember the name.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
376, yes.
We'll get those scheduled. Councilman Coghill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to revert back to the Tito House and make sure my position is clear on historic preservation. I love historic preservation. I've restored properties myself. I love historic preservation, I've restored properties myself, um, I encourage it. But the way we go about it, this is clearly an infringement on property owners' rights. Unless that property owner knew when they purchased that place that it was going to be, you know, um, put up by the city of Pittsburgh as historic preservation and not be, be able to use for its intended purposes, then you can make a case. But what's more frustrating is our historic preservation uses this as a stopgap, okay? Historic preservations that I know of, they actively go out and they look for people or places that want to be preserved. And more importantly, they come with a little bit of money in their pocket that they can make a difference. When you come to the table and you say you're going to stop this property owner to, and God knows what they might need the money for, they could need the money for, for hospital bills, they could need the money for groceries, they could need it for a new boat, that doesn't matter to us, okay? We're infringing on their rights. If we're going to have a historic preservation used as a stopgap, they should raise money, or if members here feel it's important enough, dedicate money from the city of Pittsburgh to, for their coffers so we can buy them out ourselves. So it's like, we either put our money where our mouth is, or we get out of the game of stopping property owners from selling their homes. So I just wanted to make that clear. I love historic preservation, again, I support it all the time, but when a homeowner doesn't see it coming and they're blindsided by the city of Pittsburgh, it's wrong, and I think we're liable to be sued in every case, and I, I can't imagine that we're not going to be, so that's all, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else from members? If not, motion to, uh, Corey wasn't here, motion to, excuse the absent member, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We are adjourned.